Well, it is close to five o'clock. And this time I'll call the work session for Perry City Council Monday, October 16, 2017, order please.
Item three, writings for review and discussion. Item three eighty is a heat development department. Item three eighty one is a rural zone application. Ms. Edgman?
Yes. Recently, we learned from the Department of Community Affairs that Perry was eligible to apply for the rural zone application. This is a program that designates communities of a population of fifteen thousand or below for job tax credits and credits toward the purchase price of property that will be developed for creating new business or additional jobs in the downtown. Due to the fact that DCA was using some old census data apparently, we were eligible to apply by nine residents. So, he said that we were encouraged to apply, therefore I have been working diligently on getting that application together. Again, it does give a more favorable job tax credit than the credit we would receive as a tier three community, which is what we will be receiving when we lose our opportunities on designation next year. It will expire. So, I am asking for the council to give authorization to the mayor to submit a letter requesting our application be reviewed for this rural zone designation program.
Counsel?
It looks like the same issue. I agree. Given everybody an opportunity, the fact that we would not do it for the next five years or so, I can't see why we wouldn't have something to make and tell me what the issues are. I've read through it and I didn't see any, any things that jumped out and said the state was on a specific control or anything. We're very much like an opportunity zone.
Very much the same, Ms. Edgman.
And it was, the boundaries of it would coincide with our downtown development.
Is there any reason that we're limiting it to the downtown development district?
That's the way the program is set up.
So, it's not like what we've got with the opportunity zone that it covers citywide. This is specifically in the DDA.
Correct.
Proceed. proceed? Everybody?
Will you?
Thank you.
Item three eighty two is the hotel prospect incentives approved. Mr. Gilmore?
Mayor? Mayor and council?
I am coming for you this evening to ask permission to move forward with offering some incentives for a hotel development prospect. Last year, we completed our census. The council that put it together actually recommended based on our current market, based on some of the demand in our current market, a few types of hotels and amenities, so the city Perry should go after and pursue. Utilizing that report, once it's completed, I was able to go out and draw up some interest. We've had four or five very solid prospects, I think, for hotel development here with the city. And tonight, you see Project Jack, which I believe is a very real hotel development prospect. In initial discussions with Project Jack, I, city would be willing to assist at the work sessions. Most notably permit fee waivers, possible public infrastructure improvements, expedited permitting review, that type of stuff. So, we moved forward with Project Jack in knowing that that may be a possibility and knowing that I would have to come back before y'all to ask, to ultimately ask permission to offer these if you will. So, you see in your packet that I have provided to you today what the incentive request is and what is the compounding of this request. You can see it's about $27,000, $27,360.52 in fee waivers. This is with the tack fee, building permit, sewer connection charge, you know, turning it on, all that. Generally, what the utility department would come in and deal with for a prospect like this. These are estimates, of course, please keep that in mind, but generally, this could be, this is the level of incentive that we're going to offer here for Project Jack. That's why I reviewed apartment, no costs associated with that. And then the utility connection fee waiver, which is one of the incentives y'all agreed to move forward with, that is included in the fee settlement. No infrastructures have been added. You can see the location right there off of San Dona Boulevard. It's a prime location, utilities are right there at San Dona. So, no infrastructure fees, no infrastructure improvements were needed. So, generally, what I'm hoping to get from y'all is, again, approval to move forward with offering this prospect incentives. As you can see, it's a mid-scale hotel prospect. Looking for, right in the wheelhouse of what we currently have right now with the Holiday Inn Express, approximately $60,000 investment, thirteen, fifteen full-time employees, $10 an hour type of jobs. And the amenities we're looking for in this type of prospect with breakfast service, indoor refrigerators, swimming pool, that type of thing. So, it is very much the type of hotel development we're looking for in this area in City Perry. And with some minor support here on behalf of the city, I think we can make this thing a go. I have also provided a rendering of Project Jack. Very nice property. This is actually the new model for this brand. Again, the site plan here, it's been the already developed Hardee's, the Popeyes, is quickly coming to fruition. They want to open up really this whole back area here for development. This will be kind of the linchpin in making that development happen. Right there across from the Knights Inn, you can see we've been working on a site plan and making sure they meet all of our requirements associated with the development. And then finally, a fiscal impact analysis showing the type of impact a project like Project Jack could have on our community and why it's a sound investment to forego the $27,000, some odd dollars here in revenues, for the expected revenues in the future. Does anyone have any questions about Project Jack or what I'm requesting of y'all tonight?
Counsel?
Move forward.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item three D, under administration, three D one, consider a special events coordinator position.
Thank you. So, in your board pack, you have a memo from me as well as attached job description for a special events coordinator position. We talked about this and the need for this particular position with respective effective departments and staff. And the recommendation to you would be that you authorize to receive this as a city position. Mayor, we had talked about contract, you know. Recommend this as a city position. The position would be funded part-time. Pay would be $20 an hour, $20, $21 an hour. Position will report to the city clerk and then you have a job description attached, which goes through the talks about, excuse me, what this position would be responsible for. I think this is going to be one that is similar to where we did the digital community patients person, position. But, of course, we're not talking about full-time at this time. So, if you are agreeable with it, we recommend that you forward that to your meeting tomorrow to officially approve it because that's the quickest official action. The money for this position will come from the [inaudible].
Counsel? Item three D two, consider establishing a franchise fee for natural gas.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, also in your board pack is a memo from me outlining why the administration is recommending to you to have a franchise fee of five percent for the natural gas providers in the city, which in this particular case is the only one who are providing. Things for there outlined, but one, the service demands often generally must be paid for before the tax digest is adjusted. By that, I mean there's always a demand to have services before you may have the extra value of the tax digest catching up for when you have to pay for them. Our friends at the General Assembly are constantly attacking our local tax base. You know, we've seen examples of that a number of times. Power provider franchise, at least at Platoon, where you see the attached documentation they had in there. Telephone and video provider. In some areas has reduced and also the General Assembly is constantly working and cutting back on that. City's growing in other areas that may have other natural providers, such as jointly owned natural gas. Fine incomes varies between fiscal years, that information showing you on that. George Power now owns Atlantic Gas and Light and may soon enter the field of Perry. It's not that they've told me that, but they're constantly going to be looking for ways to make, to make money. Digest growth alone, [inaudible] areas that could be served by other providers. And like I mentioned to you, I showed you the information there from the various other franchise, showing the income, impact that it has on us. And so, therefore, you may remember, for example, when you approved the millage rate, we gave you the information about the estimated cost increase. Most of that, you may remember, we had talked about probably going to be taken up from health insurance costs. And that is an example of why you may not be able to proceed with some of the other plans you had talked about. For example, the last phase of the additional mix officer. So, if you are agreeable to that, we recommend that you authorize and proceed, which would be the first reading, [inaudible] the first reading of the ordinance that go to the city attorney's office to prepare.
Any questions, counsel?
The only comment I have is that, I know Southern Company owns Atlantic Gas Light. If I'm not mistaken, the Public Service Commission governs Atlantic Gas Light as a, as a natural gas provider. It does not govern jointly on natural gas because it's the five cities that make that up, consider that their own utilities at this point. I have a question as to whether Atlantic Gas could actually come into our area without getting specific approval from the Public Service Commission because it would be infringing upon the right of us to provide our own utility within our own jurisdiction. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Although what your statement is, I think, true. It would, I'm going to ask a question. Just to make sure. I think it's protected, but I can't swear.
I think generally, the mayor is correct. However, I guess this is a cynical city manager. I don't trust the Public Service Commission to keep many of those folks out. Because you can have an area that, for example, no one is serving right now. And initially was talked about, well, that was going to be, for example, jointly owned. No service here. Well, then some arrangement or whatever is done, or for some reason jointly owned said, well, we're not ready to go there, or we don't want to go with that. See what I mean? And I also want to point out, although it may not seem that close and everything, but Atlantic Gas and Light is up and serving. Must be [inaudible].
They are. So, they have a, they have a major mine, gas mine, as it turns out, across the street from Kool-Aw-Tire. But, Kool-Aw Tire is in jointly owned service delivery area, everyone across the streets, and Atlantic Gas Light is [inaudible]. That's true.
I don't, I don't think there's much of a possibility of [inaudible] is something that could occur.
Counsel?
One of the other advantages, kind of following up on that too, is as much as we can set and control our own income levels.
Well, technically, this is all internal.
Yes.
But the fact that you want to levy a franchise fee on ourselves essentially should be all right and is all right.
Right now?
Right now.
Yeah, I do want to point out, for example, if we wind up, maybe some already, but for example, we annex some property and that's served by jointly owned, jointly owned, we have to start paying the franchise, assuming this is passed, they'd have to pay the franchise.
Unless it became part of our system.
Right.
Unless it became, well, then they'd pay it anyway. So, if we pass this.
That's right.
That's cool.
But there may be times when we would not, would not be cost-effective for us to serve an area that jointly owned.
Correct.
Yes. That's true.
Proceed. Item three. Consider requiring certain improvements for dumpster locations. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your board pack is a memo from me requesting that you authorize to proceed, although the timeframe would be to you, assuming you want to go ahead with it, of shielded building around dumpsters in the city. Some of the councilors who've been on a longer period of time may remember there was discussion with this in the past and talked about coming in and doing that. The original recommendation that came to council was very extensive and would be very expensive for existing sites. You remember there was existing, they had put in drains and all this kind of stuff and everything. And that's, that's cost prohibitive even for us, you know, as a city. However, you know, you still have, have the issue of these open dumpsters in existing locations. Now, new construction is already covered and it's being addressed. We have a number of locations around the city where you still have the dumpsters openly exposed. So, what we're recommending to you, excuse me.
When you say the dumpster openly exposed, you're not talking about the top not being on the dumpster, you're talking about the dumpster itself being visible and exposed to [inaudible].
Yes. A number of times that top will be open as well, but, yes, we're just talking about where they're physically, you know, for example, like you go down, I think it's on Second Street, right over by the Presbyterian Church. Way to cross the street from that is an apartment complex. Sitting right out there by the curb is a dumpster.
But there's also one between Waffle House and the Shell gas station that's been open for years.
Right. But I want to emphasize this is not just a deal that would be in commercial property. That's my point with the residential, you have apartment complexes and that type of stuff. So, we'd like you to, if you agree, we will prepare an ordinance which will amend the code, require that all the dumpsters over a certain period of time will have to be screened in. And what that would be comprised of is that they would have to sit on a hard surface, asphalt or concrete, something like that. And then they would have to be shielded by whatever the general fencing is that's allowed in that particular zone that they're located. So, that could be the wood type of deal. They could have, in some areas, chain link with the slats. Remember, you see what I mean? They would not necessarily have to do the concrete blocks. Remember, that was one of the things I was talking about before. So long as it's shielded from visible sight.
On that dumpster, you know, we have some that take grease and oil and like when they pick it up, I don't know when we'll be able to dump that or not. You know, when they go in and pick it up, if it ain't sealed like it supposed to, when they dump it back, or when they dump it, you know, the oil on the ground down there where they, where they got it at, I don't know whether y'all notice that or not.
We would, we would follow up, Mr. King, on that relative code as a nuisance, which I think we already have.
Okay. Make aware of some issues, please. When you say a slump, [inaudible]. Explain that in further because some of these dumpsters are already sitting in a parking lot.
Right.
Say that it's slump, are you going to require an extra different pad for it?
No, we'll take, we'll take that out. It just needs to be a hard surface. Yes, that's right. The number of already sitting up are, particularly in the commercial areas, there's already sitting hard surface.
And one other question that came to mind, [inaudible]. Going back out to be a [inaudible].
Yes.
We're talking about the possibility of recycling. Should we give some time in this lane, and I'm not talking extended time, but to know whether we are going to have a recycling process, although that would require, I'm assuming if it was a separate.
Extra space?
Extra space.
Yes.
And I'd hate to do a bunch of it and have to carry it all right back to it.
Yes, that's fine.
How quick do we know, when is that going to be? How quick will we have?
The bid information will be coming to you in your first meeting in November. And that'll give us some idea about what they're going to be doing relative to when this actually will go into place. Like I have six months, but it could be.
Based on.
Right.
We're talking about what we've been saying, do we have to pick the site up? How that going to work, you know, with the process you're talking about?
It'll, whoever the, whoever the bidders are, they'll give the actual collection. One of the things to be emphasized in the bid that went out is to provide recycling for, well, [inaudible] dumpster.
Did a awful lot of stuff, building a landing field, [inaudible] commercial, there's another system set up there.
Is it, will it be mandatory recycling, well, for instance, First Baptist, First Baptist Church?
No. It won't. Williams talked about the problem is, is that there have been a number of businesses that have indicated an interest in recycling and there hasn't been any follow-up from advance to have it set up to go.
I would say of ours, at the store, probably three quarters of it is recyclable, but there's no system.
Right. It'd be, it'd be similar to what we do with residential recycling. You either do it or you don't. That's a trick.
But if the recycling bin is a dumpster, [inaudible]. But you'd rather have the space for that extra bin and not have to go back immediately.
Or I guess see that kind of a dumpster in.
That's the location you're talking about, wasn't it? It would, it would be the same, it would be adjacent to whatever the existing dumpster is. That's what he's talking about.
Right, okay.
Given, given time to make space for a second one if needed with the fencing.
That was my, that was my point, that was my question.
You're talking about the same thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We on the same page now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we do it.
That's going to make [inaudible] have to get out over the gate.
Yes. Yes.
That's what we do at all commercial sites now.
You have [inaudible]. You have a [inaudible], you know, we need stretch of the [inaudible].
It'll save us a lot of [inaudible]. It's amazing. I mean, people go through dumpsters and.
But they really are unsightly, resonating.
The question I have is if, for example, there's a commercial business who has an existing dumpster that's been sitting in the same spot for a long time and they want to move, what are the requirements for visibility? Just to say, for example, this is all I can think of right now, the Shell station in [inaudible]. If they decide to move it from out front to the, and there's not room, I know, but if there was a spot in the back that they could move it to, and then just instead of having it out front, they put it in the back without having a fence, is that allowable? So, what's, what's the visibility rule?
Visibility would be wherever it is.
If you can see it from the public road. Is that right?
That's what, that's what we need to.
That's why I'm asking.
That's what we need to, because like you said, whether it's a catacorne or square or whatever, and like you said, if we can see it, we need to.
Then issue a fence.
We need to.
Just make, just make sure that's addressed.
That's the only other one.
It should be unless they put it inside.
But along those lines, you could, you could have, for example, on any of them, but when it comes to mine right offhand, would be like some of the businesses in [inaudible]. And if they're able to get their dumpster back in behind and you can't see it, you know, from the public streets or public parking areas and everything, they're gone.
I'm thinking about [inaudible] but they gonna have to pull it up, but they got one fit in.
Right. That's right. If it's out.
Residential. We have one that sits on, on private property that we use for [inaudible]. And one of the [inaudible].
Right.
How would we handle that?
We'd have to take care of that ourselves. Because we originally made the request for the setup on that. We didn't, and, and what, you know, I'm saying, this is going to apply to the city too. We have a number of locations in the city where we're going to have to get those taken care of as well. So, we're not talking about exempting any of the public [inaudible].
I think it'll change the aesthetics of your city significantly. If you're, if you, if you're just a new person coming to town, you're right around with the number of dumpsters we have sitting random places. Probably we'll improve that some.
We clean up, we gonna do that.
I hope. I hope we do.
Anything further? Proceed, counsel?
Yes.
Item three items for review and discussion. Item four is other business in the supplemental agenda. Four A, ask for this to be placed on the agenda. Jointly on natural gas has some capital improvements that need to be made. Counsel, you may remember when, the last time we had a joint meeting with the mayors and councils of the five cities that own jointly owned natural gas to discuss the last capital improvements that we had in [inaudible]. We don't have enough. We have, there's been a determination by the board and in consultation with MGAG, Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, that our systems are being jointly owned natural gas. It's not at capacity now, but if we grow much and we being jointly owned in the, in the middle Georgia region and our service delivery district is jointly owned, then there's going to, we don't have a choice. We're going to have to increase. For example, I know the city Perry has been requesting some increase in pressure, which would increase our capacity. And we're okay with that right now. However, if we have, in, in order to have more capacity for us, in addition to the jointly owned system, we're going to have to make some capital improvements. So, jointly owned has determined that it would be a good idea for us to get together again in order to hear what the, the expansion is for the entire system, not just the benefit of City Perry. And that meeting is scheduled now for November the fifteenth at five p.m. in Byron. I apologize, recognize a [inaudible]. And I'm sorry.
I'm making [inaudible].
Well, I brought that point up and I said, I've got a council member who's not going to like it, but I'm apologizing for that. For that, if you can make it. And Mr. Gilmore, this would be a forum. We'll make sure that we make the proper notifications to the media that, that one, we're going to anticipate having a meeting, two, the location of the meeting, and it's in the Byron Municipal Complex. And see Byron City Hall is, is going to be, I think it's in the same place we had last time. If y'all remember [inaudible]. On that.
What was that date?
November the fifteenth.
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock. In Byron.
In Byron F.
At the Byron Municipal Complex, at Byron City Hall.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, just let me know on that. So, thank you. And of course, we'll have, there'll be handouts and explanations and all that.
How are you proceeding?
An hour. It'll be an hour.
That'd be good for me. That'll be [inaudible].
Okay. If we can't get it done in an hour, we got a problem. But it'll be an hour. Anything else out of the other business or supplemental agenda? If not, item five, a council member items.
Has nothing to do with how to reply.
No.
He has fifteen days to do something.
Good.
Period.
Or less.
We don't care if we reply or not. Or she.
Well, personally, I didn't get the letter. What's on the page?
It's gonna be on the car.
Which is a much better process.
We've got a bunch of them sitting around everywhere. And then the regulation that says, only condition is it passed the law?
Uh, no, we had to change the language to track state law. So there's certain, it's not, you can't drive by and say, I don't like the way that car looks. It's gotta be one that is deemed to be discarded, junked, wrecked. I can't remember all the adjectives of state law, but there are certain adjectives that state law uses and we track those.
It's failed after its orders.
Yes, it does have a current license on it.
State law doesn't arrest that. Now, I can put it in there, but I can't tell you that I think that's valid over state law.
That would just happen if you're driving down the road.
I think generally is if you get the sticker on there, or it's assumed that there's probably a sticker on it. So if the owner or whoever is there come out and move that vehicle, then they've addressed the issue. They can't, whatever the reason is, and they follow any provisions disorder.
It has to be moved.
If it's total. So.
And the penalty is?
Penalty is a move to people.
What we gonna do then?
City has the right to dispose of it however the city thinks.
Right. As far as the city is concerned, assuming there's some other issue there. We often say, we hire some company that's interested in this type of stuff and they haul it off.
And I'll look at some of the other cities, what City Centerville said, we will contract with somebody who does scrap automobile type business. And they will be the ones to remove it. So that could be an option. I didn't want to put it into ordinance that's designed to restrict the city to one method. But there are the people out there.
All we'd be interested is they haul it and get it out of town. What they do with it is their own business.
So they could sell a car for scrap iron?
Yep.
And it would be permissible under George law? Yes, yes, it would. The owner just don't come back and say, I've got the title to this car, I said this, that, and this.
I can tell you state law says if the, if the vehicle meets these conditions, that city can pass an ordinance which allows the city to remove and dispose of the vehicle, even if it's on private property.
Good.
And so I drafted one that said, if the city sees a vehicle that meets these conditions, city can have it removed or the landlord can call and ask the city to remove it, and the city can dispose of it. Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore.
No, sir?
Mr. O.
No.
Item six of department head items. Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King.
I'd just like to let you all know tax notices were placed in the mail today with the December 20 deadline, so.
Oh, joy.
Thank you.
That's right, that's a joy.
You're doing a job, thank you.
Tell him Santa Claus is coming.
And I hate to, I'm sure you all have probably heard, there's been some issues with the email and online payments. What comes out has been working diligently since Thursday, Friday, some through the weekend, and today, trying to get that resolved. So they're working as hard as they can.
Thank you. From the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Dye.
Thank you, sir. Just two things, basketball registration opened up this week, but we have a week-long registration period similar to what we did with football. And our first movie of the year will be November 17th, that's on a Friday, that's the first full weekend. After daylight, say, the time goes to effect. And I will be reminding you all to get that for the meetings that come moving up to St. Louis. We want to show fantastic peace that was when we showed the town earlier this year, the weather eliminated that. So we'll show it out of park as part of the Harry Potter universe. So I'll have for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
From the Police Department, Chief Linn.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, I had a preliminary conversation with Mr. Gilmore on a long dormant project, I guess, that I would like to start the conversation again, maybe get some guidance from Council. We're in a critical need in the property and evidence room. I know that some years before I got here, there was discussion about building, wanting some plans drawn. We pulled those plans and looked at them. Of course, they were for a building that we're not projected to be in, you know, at some point. And really aren't adequate. So I guess what I'm asking is some guidance and, and I don't expect y'all to give it to me in a second, but maybe some permission to go forth with some exploring options about where that space would be, what it would look like, how big it needs to be, those kind of things. So I know this has been an off and on discussion over the years. Right now, we're operating out of five different locations. One is a room that is repurposed to be property and evidence across from the detective. And it's the largest of the five rooms. And then we're, have converted some of the old jail cells, one in the city I used to operate a jail, for evidence storage. And we have one room in the city hall complex for items that are going to auction. And so needless to say, it's cumbersome to move between five locations. We don't have adequate storage for some types of items. Would like to see us move toward a purpose-built space that accommodates the different kinds of things that you tend to take in as either recovered property or evidence in crimes. So that's a hit, really, I just want to start that conversation and see where we go from there.
How many, how much room you need?
Well, that'd be part of the process to say, I mean, and I'd love for y'all to come see the conditions. And we have removed thousands of items in the last six months and it's still crowded. And we've got an ongoing process to, you know, identify things that can be gone. But it's hampered by the not having an appropriate kind of storage facility and, you know, not having a large item storage area or something where you need a, you know, it's really tall stuff and you need an area like that. That would be part of the process reverent to assess all the different kinds of stores, you know, with an eye toward future growth too. So it's not, you know, once we get it built, we have to start planning the modification right away, so.
My suggestion would be for you to begin that process.
Okay.
Chief, we've got several things that are on the drawing board that you're aware of for a couple of different locations. And that needs to be taken into consideration. But by the same token, it's not helping either because most of that's long-term.
Right.
In the short, in the short term.
And we understand that that's.
So my suggestion would be, if council concurs, for you to start that process with both short-term goal and long-range goal in mind for alleviate, to alleviate the current prices. But by the same token, I don't want to waste any money either.
Nor do we.
From the stand, from that standpoint, let's see if we can come to with some compromise, if that makes any sense.
Okay. Why don't we do the research in-house to the extent we can do it? And when it gets to where we need money for a plan or something, I'll come back and show you what we've got and we'll go from there.
Okay. Mr. Gilmore.
Well, sounds wonderful. I would suggest y'all concur while we go out for a proposal for an RFP, for an architecture engineering, the actual plan layout. And we'll get together and we'll talk about what they're going to do. We'll have your document put together and we're ready to go. As you may remember, this is one of the items in this SPOS 18 that you all said you were gonna do.
That'll accomplish the same thing, which is we're gonna make, we'll be able to at some point guess on that. I'll confer with Mr. Gilmore.
Can't go out for an RFP if you all don't concur.
I just asked.
But is our 18 health refreshment, and it's just my age. Now, in the SPOS 18, we're going to do it at our current location?
Well, that's not, that's not, it's not what the administration's gonna recommend to you. Administration is recommending to you that you stick with your long-term capital plan, which means that the evidence room would be an addition going on this building.
Okay. So it's registered, that's what I understood.
Right, and that's what you're saying, I think, because that's what you're talking about, our capital plan. We go out right now, take proposals, you all recommend, whatever you decide, that's affirmed, and then they put the design together based on input, you know, from police and everything about an addition onto this building. So it wouldn't even be, because remember we talked about that before. There wouldn't be any renovation stuff in here. We don't want to spend any money unless we actually have to, any step over the bulk safety. And then if you have it set and ready to go, that could be paid for from the SPOS 12, you know, for this professional service. And then you'll have your big documents that are all ready to go when we start on the 18. As it's a pitch.
Thank you for the clarity. Chief, will that work?
Sure. Sounds good.
Concurance with Council? Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. One look and nobody noticed. Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
No, sir, we survived the fair, that's a good thing.
Congratulations.
It closed last night, so.
I know that is, that can be very hard to learn.
You know, with the weather that we have.
I have not heard anything about the tenders number, I'm sure.
It was hot.
It was hot, though.
It was.
I know that.
I don't believe it'll go past that many. Only we had a minute, we had it last year.
Yeah, I tried to count, but I gave up.
I thought that's all you fell asleep at. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. The Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two items, Mayor and Council. The first one is, I've been approached by a businessperson who has some interest in using a building on Main Street in the downtown area for, as part of her business, roasting coffee beans. That would be allowed use, but based on past experience, coffee roasting can emit an odor that is offensive to some people. Given the proximity to residential of this building, I wanted to kind of get your thoughts on this issue. They would be roasting five to six hours a day, five to six days a week. They've looked into an air scrubber, which would kind of clean the odor. That's a $20,000 line item which they can't afford. I will say, based on past experience, the location that I'm familiar with was adjacent to a neighborhood, but it was also in a low area. So there wasn't any opportunity for the odor, the smoke to be blown away. We did have in another location, one that I don't recall having complaints on. But again, I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention and get your thoughts on whether a potential offensive odor producer would be appropriate adjacent to residential.
Is it an allowable deny?
It would be allowable to deny based on the odor issue. And this person is aware that it can be offensive.
Well, if any restaurant within the city of Perry decides to cook chitlins, we'd like to say no. I'm just saying. I've never, smell of coffee's always been good to me. And barbecue restaurants, they produce smoke. I'm just playing the devil's advocate.
Yeah, well, apparently roasting beans isn't exactly the same scent as preparing coffee. Some people have told me that it smells like burnt popcorn. So, and like I said, to some it's okay, to others it's offensive.
Anybody we could, do they have to be downtown?
I don't think they have to, but that was the location they were looking.
It's on Main Street?
Yes.
Do you know any other cities?
Yeah.
What do you got, Lou? In downtown? We got a couple. From Ringland, I know that he had a couple there. That's what he's saying, one was bad and one wasn't. And he had complaints on the one, so.
My only request is that we, whatever stance that we take is defendable.
Okay.
Within our existing ordinance.
Okay.
Council, anything? Anything else? I guess not. Mr. Gilmore? Did you wanna weigh in?
Not on this one, if I can help.
I would, just like I said, I would suggest that we have a solid basis if you are gonna deny on that.
Okay.
But I'd be very careful.
I'll get with Mr. Holbrook before making a decision.
I would say probably, though, under the circumstances, you need to not be with that, you know, because it is immediately adjacent to a residential neighborhood. You still have people complaining about tolerance, depending on the weather and all that kind of stuff.
And you're sitting right in somebody's backyard, it's not only empty at all.
That's fine.
I know, but I agree, we need to make sure that legal can do it.
We see how people that are upset that the train comes through town and sits a parking lot and goes home. I don't know, we do about that either. But that's.
But the train is an alternative.
They can all, in fact, it would be better that wouldn't be in somebody's backyard.
I think, I think, once you get away from immediately adjacent residential neighborhood, you'd be okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, one other item I do have, as you know, the census is coming up in a couple of years. And we are preparing for that. One of the items that we've been asked to provide information on is being able to review the census's address data for the city of Perry. We are preparing for that. One of the things in looking at that data, and it's confidential data, whoever has the authority to review it will have to sign confidentiality agreements regarding that. But beginning to determine who needs to be included in that list of reviewers. People that know where people live in Perry, what their addresses are. So just wanted to kind of throw that out to you to be thinking about. Probably need to have some recommendations fairly shortly. But suggestions have been the fire department, the utility providers that know and have utility accounts and so forth. A tax assessor potentially, some longtime resident that knows the neighborhoods. And that's where you may come in in being able to help us identify those persons. But probably looking at seven or eight people total that would have authority to review this data that's provided by the census and verify that the addresses are correct or need to be modified in some way to be able to make sure we have an accurate account for the 2020 census. So just be thinking about anybody you think would be appropriate to add to that.
Let me get this straight, this US Census Bureau is asking us to provide personnel to verify that certain people live in certain addresses confidentially?
What they are asking us to do is to review their address data. It's not gonna be persons, it will just be address points essentially, address information, to verify that that, yes, that address is in the city of Perry, or there's an address that you're missing, or whatever. So that they have an accurate address database for the census. We don't have to do this, but it's requested. We can, we can have the census done on the data that they have and take the results from that. Or we can review their data and make sure it's accurate.
And as fast as we're going, it could be inaccurate.
Right. I mean, there's gonna be some cutoff point. But I think as long as we have, let's say, some of these subdivisions that are building out, once we have the street addresses in there, once they actually start going out and doing, I think there will be some field survey work, once they see that, if there's not an address on their, on their list, they probably are going to add that if they, if it's reasonable, if they think it's reasonable that someone's living there, lives in the house. But it's just a matter of verifying that their data is as accurate as it can be.
From the standpoint of being either in the city or not?
Correct. And whether they have all of the addresses that are in the city, residential addresses.
What's your timeframe for the spots?
Need to get it probably by the end of November. There's some forms that have to be filled out, I'm gonna have to get your signature on one of them. So probably in the next couple of weeks, if you can let us know if there are community leaders that should be included in this.
Mr. Gilmore?
Well, the other thing I want to follow, which is really important, I think, for you all, is, you know, for example, like on the addresses and everything, we can basically do that, for example, through customer service, okay? But if you have some suggestions on folks who would be interested and lived here for a while, do the follow-up on two parts. One is, yes, that team would be correctly addressed, but the other thing is, without violating confidentiality, that they get out and talk with people, encourage them to complete the census information. See what I mean? Because you can have some areas where folks may not be interested in that, or they have some type of hesitation, you know, for one reason or another. And they can just be, just generally, not picking on any one particular person or anything, but just generally saying, you know, you need to fill this out, you got this taken care of. Or, you know, so-and-so is, you know, Ms. Wilder's place, okay, but Ms. Wilder is deceased. Okay, so you don't have to, in other words, it won't be a response there because that house is empty right now.
So you can come and give me, I'll give you my name.
I don't have a problem, thank you, Mr. Gilmore, with all due respect. I don't have a problem verifying addresses inside or outside. Has, I want to ask this question, has anybody in this room been through a census taker's review this year? The questions were intrusive, very personal, and I finally got tired of them and said, go away. I choose not to participate. And you can quote me all day long, I will never do it again.
And they said, you said they wanted me to be involved, I wouldn't agree with it.
I don't care if they know my address is in the city of Perry, but that's it. Go through one of those questions and then come back and say I'm not participating. That's my opinion.
All due respect, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
For your opinion. And certainly each individual has a right to answer what he or she so desires.
That's not true. We never go ahead. They won't let you say no as an answer. And I said no to everything they said. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I cannot emphasize to you how important this census data is for planning and getting information and grants and all that type of stuff.
It is.
It is just incredibly important. I understand there are some people who say no to all the questions from what I understand. But, you know, I think that if we could just encourage some folks, you know, relative to confidentiality, because it is good to get this information. I mean, probably at least ninety percent of the stuff Robert deals with, it goes by whatever the census says. You know, and if you want to go, you want to get these grants and that type of stuff and everything, that's where they first go back to take a look and see, you know, they take a look at the, you know, particularly the deal on the income ranges. That's incredibly important for us relative to what we'd be able to get or not get, so.
And I'll just add that from a confidentiality standpoint, given what they're requiring us to do just to be able to review their address information, let alone any of the personal information. I mean, we can't, we can't even, as someone who looks at that, and we can't use that data to update our database. It's, so I think they're pretty tight on, and the security requirements that have to be in place for securing that data while we have it is pretty incredible.
I think we should participate. You make your decision about it. It's all in the zone.
Sure to mark off the bears and.
I've already done it, so. Do you think else?
That's all I have.
But go back to the point, if you're comfortable, you know.
That's my. That's. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker.
Well, nothing from Fire and Emergency Services, but on a personal note, I do want to announce that I have, we have a new addition to our family. A new granddaughter was born Friday the 13th in Up and Coming, Georgia. She was Britt Bellamy Ann Parker, six pounds, eleven ounces, and nineteen and a quarter inches long. And her and mama are healthy, so we are very proud.
Congratulations.
That's all I got.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Want to go break it for show and tell?
It may be a little wild.
That's great. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Smith.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, one thing, please don't forget about the neighborhood cleanup in New Hope this Saturday. We'll start at 8:30 at Johnny Doble Dixon Park, do the usual deal, fan out the teams, clean up the neighborhood, and then enjoy a barbecue launch afterwards. Thank you.
Sir, I'm the media specialist, Mr. Farmer.
And don't forget, yes, Mayor and Council, don't forget on Sunday is the video shoot. It's gonna be downtown on Carroll Street, we're blocking off the 900 blocks to do this. And this will be part of our promotional video that we've partnered with CVB. And dress as business casual and be there like 4:30 if you can. It should last a couple of hours, but you will be served food, Perfect Pair is gonna serve food, and James Farmer's helping with the table and decor, and so it should be a very nice time. And hope to see you all there. Please let me know if you are gonna be there so we can plan accordingly as far as the table setup is concerned. Thanks.
Mind about the towers. Okay. 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, correct?
That's correct. Oh, wait, no, sorry, 11:00 AM to 9:00.
11:00 AM to 9:00. Gary's Park. Come on out. We'll make sure you're there.
The 20 AM.
We'll do that.
20 AM.
20 AM. Our next meeting is tomorrow, pre-council meeting at 5:00, council meeting at 6:00. Anything else on the agenda on the calendar looking to address at this time? Well, if there's nothing else at this time, I entertain a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of real estate.